2022. We can start by introducing ourselves and I'm going to start with Mike.
Mike Young.
Marge Tony.
Liz Banks.
Diane Trappasso.
Tom Walsh.
And then Dave.
David Zonia.
Hi. The agenda is at 6:35, there's a special permit for 18 Camp Road. Rachel and Robert Galasso. At 6:50, there's a special permit for 290 Clark Road Extension. Stephen and Megan Taradinko. And at 7 o'clock, a determination for 54 Westwood Drive for Brian Bays. Town plan or update for business, new business. So we can start with the minutes from the March 16 meeting. You have a chance to look them over?
Yep.
Good.
Mike, are you all set with them?
I'm all set.
Okay, so we can have a motion.
I make a motion to accept the minutes of March 16, 2022.
Mike?
I'll second that.
All right, all those in favor? Only three of us can vote.
I abstain. I'm an abstainer.
Yeah, so David and Marge and he's up. All right. Takes us to, can we start early on a special permit?
No.
We have to wait till, yeah, we have to wait till 3 minutes.
We could, do you want to do the determination?
Yeah, because that doesn't need to be at the time.
We can do that.
Yep.
Why don't we, that will be.
That would be good for you too, so you don't have to.
Quick and easy. All right, so we're going to do the determination for a, on 54 Westwood Drive, the installation of an above-ground pool on a lot with less than the required frontage. Lot coverage is only going to be 4.32%, and there's not going to be any new conformities, non-conformities created. But this lot does lack the required frontage, so that's why a determination is necessary. We did hear from the fire department. They just requested that safety signs such as no diving were applicable, act were posted. Conservation said that there doesn't appear to be any conservation requirements for this project. And the DPW said not to put the pool over the sewer line. And otherwise, they were fine. Do you have any questions, Mike?
I have no question.
Marge?
I really had no questions. I mean, it dates back. Coverage increase is only 4.32%.
The only question I had is that on the minimum front setback, it's existing 40 feet, but then it's going to be 86 feet? Does that mean your pool is 86 feet from the road?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. That was my only question.
I have none.
Anybody from the audience? Dave, do you have any questions?
No questions whatsoever.
Okay.
I make a motion, I make a motion to grant the determination to Brian Bays for the property located at 54 Westwood Drive to allow the installation of a 21-foot-above-ground pool on a lot with less than the required frontage. The proposal does not intensify or create additional non-conformities, and the owner may apply for a building permit for the described activities as shown on the plans entitled Mortgage Inspection Plan, Brian B. Bays, 54 Westwood Drive, prepared by Rennie Moran and job number 06-1324-20.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? No?
Okay, with it.
All those in favor? Okay, and it's unanimous.
That's a lot, enjoy it.
Have fun.
Enjoy it.
I'll send you the determination approval. I'll send you the hard copy and I'll email you a copy as well.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, you're welcome.
Good evening.
Now, we can do the.
Did Dave, uh?
What? Yep, yeah, he voted, yep.
So we have 60, and everybody did, okay.
Okay, go ahead, okay.
All right. All right, in accordance with provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 28, no, Chapter 40, sorry, 40A, Section 11, the zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing at the Center Office Building located at 301 Main Street, Sturbridge, Massachusetts, 01566, on Wednesday, April 20, 2022, at 6:35 PM, on the application of Rachel and Robert Galasso. Right? The applicant is requesting a special permit pursuant to Article 11, Section 300 hyphen 11.1 to 11.6 of the zoning bylaw according, regarding accessory dwelling units for the property located at 18 Camp Road. The applicant is proposing to construct a 1,472-square-foot accessory dwelling unit attached to the existing residence. The proposal request can be viewed at www.sturbridge.gov slash zoning hyphen board hyphen appeals slash pages slash slash recent filings. Or arrangements can be made to view the application in plan by contacting the Sturbridge Planning Department at 508-347-2508, or by email at jaylacy@sturbridge.gov. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on this proposal should appear at the time and place designated. Elizabeth Banks, Chair, Sturbridge Zoning Board of Appeals.
Okay. A special permit to construct an accessory dwelling unit in a suburban residential zoning district. It has 3.8-acre lot that conforms to all zoning in all respects. All setbacks will comply with zoning, and the total lot coverage will only be 2.3% after the construction of the accessory dwelling unit. Just trying to think. It meets all the requirements. And the DPW had no comment on the work. Con preservation said it does not appear to be within any buffer zones, so the review by the Sturbridge Conservation Commission does not appear to be required. And the fire department just talks about the smoke detectors and hardwiring the smoke alarms with battery backup for new construction. And the building inspector had no objections to the project. So I guess you can go ahead and talk about it.
Okay.
To make your presentation.
Okay. First of all, let me introduce ourselves. All the way to the right is Deirdre Galasso, who is the owner of the property. Right next to me is her mother-in-law, Rachel Galasso. And my name is Ron DeSantis. I'm going to act as the general contractor and your advisor through the process. I am a certified building inspector, as well as a licensed construction supervisor. So we should, we should be able to do everything the right way. We've come in and talked to the planner to start with, planner and the building inspector, to find out exactly what part of the zoning bylaw applied to this type of construction. And they gave us a lot of good advice. So we went out and hired a professional land surveyor, which you may be familiar with, Joe Levesque from Sturbridge, to do the property survey. And we also needed some information from a registered sanitarian. So we hired Tom Purcell from Oxford, Massachusetts, to do a letter in regards to the proposed use. And also, we've hired Stephen Hart, who's a home designer, to do the schematic plans. The plans we're going to show you are only schematic plans to give you a rough idea. They're not structural plans or anything. It's just to give you an overall purview and view of what we plan on doing. End up here and show you what we have. So this is the lot here. As you can see, I Xed out this property in the middle, which you can see there is totally white. This lot that Deirdre owns is like a U-shaped lot. She does not own that property. On that property is. Who knows what's going to happen down the road? Banks said about the lot size and everything.
All right, Ron, can you just grab one of the mics?
Oh.
You're welcome.
Just to give you some numbers, the lot area required for that lot district, that zoning district, is 32,670 square feet. We have 166,000 square feet. So we're way over on zoning, the lot size. Frontage requirement is 125. We have 264, just about. Front setback is 30. The house right now is 289.7. The addition is going to cut that down to 244. So we're over 200 feet back from the road. The closest side setback, we can go up to 15 feet. The existing house is 109 feet from the side setback. We're going to propose to go as close as 92 square, 92 lineal feet, six times the amount that the side setback requires. Rear setback is 15 feet. Existing house is 132 feet. Whereas the proposed addition is going away from the rear property line. The proposed setback for the rear is going to be 198 feet. The height allotment for that zoning district, and probably most zoning districts in town, is 35 feet. Existing house is 21.4 feet high. The proposed accessory dwelling unit will be 24.5 feet high, just three feet higher, so it won't overwhelm the existing dwelling. The lot coverage, cover up the 15% for the lot. We only intend on covering 2.3%. So we're well over the lot size too. So here, the yellow shows the driveway coming in off a camp road. So 18 starts up here, then you have 20 camp road here, and then you have 18 camp road continuing. That's where the driveway is, is the yellow driveway. The blue is the existing single-family dwelling. The dark color is the proposed. Let's go over quickly the floor plan. This gives you a general idea of what the house is going to look like. This is a front elevation here. This whole thing is a front elevation. This is the existing house from here. That's the existing. From here over is the proposed with the porch. You can see that we've tried to give it the same look with about the same amount of windows. One more garage door because of the width of the house. But same, same basic style, same roof style. This is the, yeah, this is the rear elevation of the accessory dwelling only. This is the left-side elevation of the accessory dwelling only, right here with the porch. See the porch? And this is, this shows you the elevation from this side, which is right-side elevation. So this is section here, is this part of the house here. This section here of the existing house is this part of the existing house. And the addition just slightly goes just a little bit higher again, peak-to-peak, about three feet higher than the existing house. And that's this part here. Same roof pitch. We're just about the same roof pitch here and here. This pitch is a little shallower. We didn't want to go with the shallow pitch. Same symmetry of two panes. So that's basically the elevations. And this is the floor plan. It does have a three-car garage under. As you'll notice, it does not have a basement. That's why the house is so large. Deirdre and Sean, her husband Sean, Rachel's son, do not have a basement. They have no storage at all. So I'm sure mother-in-law and father-in-law will be glad to help them out with a little storage. And that's why we proposed to build this side. Again, now Bob and Rachel have no basement either, so basically, the garage is going to be a garage slash basement, both. So upstairs, starting in the front right, we have a little office here. We have an open floor plan of a living room, kitchen dining area here. This is the porch right here. This is the back stairs going down into the garage, which is shown right here in the garage plan. You go, you come in this door, this is the laundry room here. Large walk-in closet, one bedroom, master bedroom, one master bath, the bath here, shower, toilet, sinks. And then there is a half-bath here for guests, just the toilet and a sink. And then here is a little rear entranceway to go down into this room, which is a bedroom now, which is going to end up being the common back hallway for both.
And you have an office there?
Have an office here.
Where is that part again?
This one right here?
Okay, so the top one, that's, it leads down.
This.
Oh, I see, I see it now.
This is, this is like a two or three-stair back stairway and a door that opens into their house, Deirdre and Sean's house.
Okay.
Because Grammy will be over there all the time with the grandchildren, you know?
Access only for grandchildren to come that way.
Well, like a mother-daughter house.
Yeah, it really is. It's really a true in-law apartment.
But that's what we used to call them in New York, mother-daughter house.
And you know, this is, as you all know, because of the price of housing nowadays, this is, this is a great option for people to get the family back together. I know when I was young, my whole family lived in the same three-decker on Shrewsbury Street in Worcester, and that's the way it used to be.
They're no longer just confined to family now.
Exactly. Yeah.
But I'm not happy about.
Yeah. So that's basically the overall plan. And we'd be glad to answer any questions there.
No, so basically, you have an area that appears to be five garages, which slash storage. Okay. Because you only mentioned the three, so that's why I mentioned the other two.
Yeah, the two existing garages don't have, you know?
But total there's five.
Deirdre and Sean's existing house. Second?
It's a very small garage. My SUV, I have an Explorer, doesn't even fit into our garage.
This, this whole area here of Deirdre and Sean's house is finished basement, all finished.
It's actually our living room and kitchen.
Mm-hmm.
Basement, ground level, walkout in the front.
Yeah. And this is their garage. And there's a whole section of the.
We only have existing attic above the left side of the structure, the flatter side. Only houses are AC.
There's an attic here, but literally no attic. Built in 1975, did you?
1975.
Yeah, yeah.
According to the assessors' records.
Yeah.
So kind of typical for that era.
Yep.
So on that piece of land that's, nobody, you guys don't own it.
No.
Someone else owns that square piece cut out, that's.
It's not inhabited. I believe they live in Vermont.
The owner, the mother of the owner lives in Vermont.
It's falling in on itself. The doors are open, there's animal tracks in and out of it. A little creepy. My packages get delivered there, I don't know why. Yes, because someone lives there. But that's fine.
You can clearly see no one lives there. It is actually falling in on itself, as you said, and.
It's been condemned, it needs to be.
I took a walk over there when we first started the project, and I would, I've been in a lot of buildings. Doesn't really have a basement, has crawl space, and someone's living down. Not, not a person, some animal is living.
I was going to say, what? You're horrified, Daisy.
Yeah, so hopefully, it's not a mountain lion, but probably not. But anyway, that's basically it. We do, we do, as you read, Liz, we do meet all the requirements of zoning. I think we'll be okay. Me being a building inspector, I like to work with professional people in the design and everything. That's why we've hired people. And we will, we will more than exceed what building inspectors will require. It's going to give. Problem. We intend on making the new addition really energy-efficient, that's stress code in Sturbridge. But we're going to go for the max, the max credit from National Grid, max save. So actually, we're going to be what you'd call over-insulating a little bit.
Can't over, can't over-insulate.
Well, there's no such thing, really. There used to be, but there isn't anymore, that's right. There used to be.
I have something, oh, I'm sorry.
Go right ahead, Marge.
I shouldn't have interrupted, but my brain is sore, so. Have you heard anything from the health department regarding your septic system? They ever get back?
We stopped there. When we first came to talk to.
I know you would.
Gene and Nelson, we stopped at the board of health window and talked to Ken Lacy. And he asked us basically what we were doing. And we told him exactly what we were doing. And special permit requirement is that we had to have a registered sanitarian take a look at what we were doing, basically give the board a letter saying that's okay. Deirdre and Sean bought, well, Deirdre bought the house 2016, and it passed Title V. Has like six feet of ground walk, which is being passed.
But you, have you received any formal?
I spoke with Ken Lacy today. We're also getting a permit for an above-ground pool, above-ground pool. And he had asked me again about the bedrooms, and I told him that it would just be four. One of them would now be over there, we're eliminating a bedroom. And he said that would be fine, but nothing in writing or further than that. He knew we had a meeting tonight.
I would want to get it in writing. I mean, to cover your, cover yourself.
He didn't comment. If you look at the planner's notes, he didn't comment on our application.
He didn't comment on our above-ground pool.
You have your.
I mean, this is why.
From Tom Purcell, yeah?
I'm, yes, I had that later, but I'm concerned that you haven't heard from ours.
I can check in with him tomorrow.
I need to talk to him today. And it seems like everything's all set, but I think he was going to send her an email.
I think we should have something on file, just to protect them.
I think it's a great idea, too.
Totally, I like things.
Yeah, we'll get an email confirmation from him.
Get it in writing.
Yeah.
I hear you.
Do you have any questions, Mike?
No, I have no questions on the plan.
Dave, do you have any?
Well, public.
No, none whatsoever.
Did you have more, Marge?
No, I think it was very well-covered.
Yeah, I agree. I don't have any questions, do you?
Oh, okay, thank you.
Hey, that wasn't bad.
Anybody in the audience? No? Okay. Would you like to make a motion?
Make a motion to close the public hearing?
Don't move. You made, don't move.
Somebody second it. Okay. So, all those in favor of closing the public hearing? Okay, we're all set. Unanimous.
Now, go for it, Diane. I'm going to take a rest.
I make a motion to grant the special permit to Rachel and Robert Galasso to allow the construction of an accessory dwelling unit in accordance with Article 11, Section 300 hyphen 11.1 to 11.6 of the zoning bylaw for the purpose to construct a 1,472-square-foot accessory dwelling unit at 18 Camp Road. The proposal meets all the standards set forth in Section 300, Class dash 11.4, accessory dwelling unit standards in the zoning bylaw, according to the plans entitled Lot Plan, Lot Plan for Deirdre, Project 18 Camp Road. Project number DAL001. End date, February 16, 2022. Architectural, architectural plans prepared by SW Consulting. Plan date, March 7, 2022. Map 2314 Lot 18, with the following conditions. And the conditions are, all construction and site improvements shall be in conformance with the plans submitted and approved by the Zoning Board of Appeals. All state and local zoning bylaws, building codes, and regulations must be adhered to. All other necessary permits must be obtained prior to the start of construction, and an as-built must be provided to the planning department.
That's the finding.
I was thinking that when she was reading that.
Yeah, the finding.
But I kind of said the finding, that it met all the standards.
Yeah.
It met all the requirements.
Well, we just need two separate ones. It was.
Typically, we do.
Yeah.
But I, but I thought, right, okay.
Included it in the, in this.
All right, I made, do you want it separate? And I made the finding that it met all the, all the standards that, yeah.
And then the other.
It met all the requirements that are necessary. And it's not more, it's, it's in adherence with the, with the.
Yeah, we made the finding according to that bylaw. And then the special permit is with the other, well, necessary permit.
That was in the condition.
That's in the special permit.
Right.
Yeah. We have to do two votes for them.
Right, the finding, right, okay, yeah.
Can we do the one for this first? Do it in reverse order?
No, we actually should do the finding, no, we have to do the finding.
I'm sorry, I still work at the board of health.
Don't be sorry.
Put it on hold.
All right.
All right, here, here's the other, Marge, the other motion.
Yeah. All right, who's, who's second it?
Second mine, okay, this.
The finding?
I'll second the.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
All right, all those in favor of the motion that you grant the finding? Okay, unanimous. Now, for the motion that you just read.
Okay. Somebody needs to second.
That's for the granting of special permit.
Granted of the special permit.
I'll second that.
Second by Marge, any discussion? No? All those in favor? All right, we're all set.
All true, yeah.
Unanimous. No, you're all set.
You are all set. I will be sending you the decision, hard copy and an email copy.
Thank you so much.
Say again?
All you need, once you're finished, is the as-built, so you possibly.
We'll get that as soon as the foundation's in. We'll have that right away.
We're in good hands.
Nice to meet you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Enjoy.
Thank you.
Cost a lumber, we're going to need it from here.
No.
It's terrible, isn't it?
10.75.
Not only the cost, what are they down to now? No more two-by-fours, you're down to what? What are they going to be down to, one by?
Two-by-six?
No, I'm saying, what, that's anomaly, what are they down to, though?
Oh, two-by-four is half by three and a half.
Yeah.
But, so almost down.
That's what I'm saying.
When you try to um, make everything work, you have to measure all your lumber now to make sure that it's.
Well, it's, it's probably, probably about 12, 15 years? How many years, Mr. Jalbit? No more two by fours, about 15?
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
Thank you guys very much.
You're welcome. Good luck.
Rough idea, right? Training house? In them, they were in. We could get a.
Oh, I know.
For the same.
I, I, I know the way my house was built. Yep.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. You too. Very good presentation.
Thank you.
Michael, thank you for the pen. Have a good night. Thank you, Janay.
Oh, thank you.
Okay, what time are we on now?
Seven o'clock.
You wanna? Want me to read the? Ready?
Ready.
In accordance with the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 11, the zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing at the Center Office Building located at 301 Main Street, Sturbridge, Massachusetts 01566, on Wednesday, April 20th, 2022 at 6:50 PM on the application of Stephen and Megan Tar, Tar, Tar Dinko. Um, the applicant is requesting a special permit pursuant to Article 15, Section 300, hyphen 15.2 A through E, Article 18, Section 300 slash 18.2 parentheses 2, and Article 11 of the zoning bylaw to expand, change or alter a pre-existing non-conforming structures or uses for the property located at 290 Clark Road Extension. The applicant is proposing to construct a second story for an accessory dwelling unit on the existing garage within the existing foundation and to add a new set of stairs, which will increase the lot coverage. The proposal request can be viewed at www.sturbridge.gov-zoning, no, slash zoning hyphen, no. W W W dot Sturbridge, dot govern, hyphen, no.
Slash.
It's so hard to read that.
Zoning hyphen board hyphen appeals slash pages slash recent filings or arrangements can be made to view the application and plan by contact, contacting the Sturbridge Planning Department at 508-347-2508 or by email at jlacy@sturbridge.gov. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on this proposal should appear at the time and place designated. Elizabeth Banks, Chair, Sturbridge Zoning Board of Appeals.
Thank you. So, um, the application is to allow the addition of a set of stairs to the, to access the second floor of the garage resulting in an increase in overall lot coverage. So that you, that you're going to build an accessory dwelling above the garage on the same footprint. But the second set of stairs needed for um, entry and exit will increase the lot coverage. The property is on suburban residential zoning, but it, it's only um, point 18 acres. It has 56, um, point 884 feet of frontage and the existing home and the garage do not comply with setback and lot coverage is at 35.56 under, percent under current conditions. And the addition of the stairs will increase the coverage, coverage to 36.42 percent. And that's one of the reasons for the special permit required for that. The accessory dwelling unit proposed will be 730 square feet. Um, and the single family home is 2,436 square feet. And the accessory dwelling unit will have an open floor plan with one bedroom and one bathroom. The accessory unit is proposed as a separate housekeeping unit that functions as a separate, and it functions as its own separate unit. The accessory unit will be the only one proposed and will be the own, be in an accessory dwelling unit on the premise. The owners of the main unit will continue to occupy the main home. Proposed unit will be contained within an existing accessory structure. That's not applicable because it's in its own structure above the garage. Structure will still maintain the garage underneath and the accessory structure will be upstairs. The appearance of the present structure will be maintained. Character of the building will not be altered by this proposal. Parking is supposed to be continued in the garage under the dwelling unit. Uh, the property is served by public sewer and the unit will be designed in, in conformance with the state building code. Um, the, the applicant must add a second set of stairs, which will require the uh, a finding and a special permit since this is gonna increase the lot coverage. The applicant is also proposes to raise the existing porch by one foot to be even with the floor of the house. Fire department. They asked that the smoke alarm would be hardwired and the heat detector, and a heat detector in the garage area. Um, the conservation, it, it, um, that it, it is located within the conservation commission jurisdiction and a notice of intent has been filed and a public hearing will be scheduled. Final. Um, and the DPW had no comment on this proposal. Lenny, do you want to make your presentation?
Yes, I'm from Jalbit Engineering. I'm here to present the project that's located at 290 uh, Clark uh, Road Extension uh, for an accelerator unit, but before I do, I'd like to present to the town the certificate of mailing of all the butters, including the uh, the abutting towns and the legal notices that were published in the newspaper. All, all the applicable receipts for the certified mailings were, were sent and, and received before the board tonight. Before I go into this thing, it, it's, it's, it's a pretty simplistic thing in that the existing house structure is not being altered in any way. And the existing garage foundation is not being altered in any way. It's 24 by 30. It's staying that way. There's no addition to the garage, no addition to the house and no addition to any impact. The, the property itself is serviced by a town sewer, so there'd be no impact there. Just connecting within the existing sewer system and, and the house and the water from the private well will be connected to the house, so that they're all integrated into one. There would be a applicable connection permit for the sewer with the town when they made that connection and there'll be a connection with the water department for the uh, unit up above, which should be no problem. The, the, the property itself is, is gonna go with uh, the parking, which will be two spaces within the garage itself, which is presently existing, plus two additional spaces outside, so there's sufficient parking. We do not need anything for uh, any variances or anything for parking. We do not need any uh, variances or anything for uh, any construction. The only thing we have is for the uh, sewer, uh, excuse me, conservation commission, which we let tomorrow night. Uh, we have no real excavation or soil eruption within, in the property. We're putting in a sewer line at the existing sewer pump. And we're putting a water line from the house to the garage. That's, that's the only two real uh, soil disturbances that would take place. The other thing is, is that the patio, which is located on the uh, westly side will be raised one foot and that floor level on that uh, existing patio will match the floor level in the house. That's the only alteration that would be uh, done in that, in that area there. Uh, the uh, drainage on the thing, there will be a drip strip that will be placed on next to the house. There'll be two drip strips to send to the garage area and then the new stairwell that'll be on these um, west, westly side of the garage going servicing the building will be repaired and there with a new concrete pad on the side of the garage for access upstairs. If you, if you wanna look at the building itself, the building addition, which is actually a self-contained addition in that it will contain one bedroom, uh, one, one bathroom and a, a living room area. And it'll, it'd encompass the 730 square feet. The uh, plans for the building itself are enclosed within your packet, but if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Conservation, is that for an NOI? That's tomorrow night. What's the 1% increase that you're asking for?
Well, what is actually, what actually takes place here is that uh, we're, we're going from 3556 percent to 36.42.
That's what I said, 0.86 percent.
Right, which is under 1%, but the thing is, it is necessary by law because the, the apartment and the site has to have two means of egress. And you can't use the same door.
All right.
So that's basically it.
It was 0.86, all right.
Mike, do you have any question?
Um, no.
Marge, do you?
Uh, that, that's just what I had.
Well, the only question I had was, I was looking at the map and every, the, the um, map smapper that you submitted and then the uh, town of Sturbridge map. And then the map. On the map, well, yeah, the um, site plan, the proposed site plan. They were all a little different. So, two of them show part of the house, well, which looked like part of the house on the property next door. I actually, I drove out there and took a look and there is a shed. Uh, and I met um, Mr. Um.
Tar Dinko.
Tar Dinko, yeah. So he was there and so I asked him about it and he, he had said shed is like two feet from the hu, from their house. And he's, and it, I mean, it matches, the siding and the roofing all match his house. And he was there when he bought the house and he, he did, he said um, they don't really know whose shed it is because it is, and they're not, you know, sure whose property it's on. A hundred percent.
It, it, it's encroaching on actually, boss.
What?
It's encroaching between both.
Yeah, it's exactly, like on both properties.
In fact, if you look, if you look at our proposed site plan, you can see that the shed is encroached.
Yeah, there was something else encroached, a little off here.
But, and the property next door does have, okay, yeah, does have a cabin or, with a deck on it, because that was also on one of the maps, but not on the, on another map. So I, I went out there because I, you know, I wanted to be sure what we were looking at. So, um, yeah, it almost looks like the shed is more on the other, next door neighbor's property than.
That is correct.
Said if he had to take it down, he, he would and I just, I just said it might not be out of the realm of possibility, so I don't know.
No one's complained about it. We just let it, that, that would become a matter of the civils.
The only thing is you'd have more lot, less lot coverage, but.
Yeah, but it becomes, yeah.
That was my only, that was the only question that I had. Diane, do you have any question?
I, I don't.
Tom, do you? David, do you, do you have any question?
I have one. Um, you have like two, two uh, sets of stairs for egress. You have one on the exterior part of the home and uh, then you have one that goes down into the garage. Is that right?
What's that?
Uh, the methods of egress, external stairs, and is the other downstairs into the garage?
It's enclosed in the packet. They, they, there's an entrance in the front of the garage. But if you, if you look, if you look at the drawing for the, for the house plan, it shows you that the uh, right here, there's a door right here next to the garage. That goes into the house upstairs. So there's actually two.
Okay, yeah, I, I thought so. I just wanted to, I just wanted to get that clear in my mind, but uh, yeah, thank you.
So there's stair, there's stairs in the garage and then the outside, correct?
Yep.
Any questions from the audience? Being none. Any more questions from the board?
Nope. I'll make.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Do we have a second? All those in favor of closing the public hearing? Right, unanimous?
Excuse me, my throat is dry.
The findings?
Yeah.
That's what I.
Right.
The euro.
And there's, well, actually two, there's two, that we can do, I mean, I mean, it's a.
Finding first.
We gotta do the finding, so there'll be two like, I mean, my motion is like for two. I make a motion to find the proposal for um, Stephen and Megan Tar Dinko for the property located at 290 Clark Road Extension. That the proposal for, um, the proposal for the special permit meets all the standards for the accessory dwelling unit. And for the second finding, I make that the, for the um, for the, for the stair, for the stairs, um, it will not be more detrimental to the neighborhood.
Do we have a second? Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion?
David, I think, did David second it?
Yep.
Yes.
Yes, he seconded.
All those in favor of the finders?
Mark?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm just writing.
I make a motion to grant the special permit to Stephen and Megan Tardinkio to allow the construction of an accessory dwelling unit above the garage, 730 square feet, in accordance with the Article 11, Section 300, 11.1 to 11.6 of the zoning bylaw at 290 Clark Road Extension. I'm trying to repeat myself. The proposal meets all the standards set forth in this Section 300, 11.4, and grant the second special permit to allow the addition of a set of stairs to access the second floor of the garage, an increase in lot coverage, and to raise the floor to the existing porch to be even with the existing house floor. This will not be more detrimental to the neighborhood pursuant to Article 15, Section 300 slash 15.2 A through E, and Article 18, Section 300, 18.2 parentheses 2, all according to the plans entitled, Proposal Site Plan, Stephen M. and Megan E. Tardinkio, 290 Clark Road Extension, prepared by Jalbert Engineering, Plan Date 28/2022, DWD number 01150, and Architectural Plans, prepared by A. Design Architect, Plan Date 22/2022, DWD number A/1.00, with the following conditions. All construction and site improvements shall be in conformance with the plans submitted and approved by the Zoning Board of Appeals. All state and local zoning bylaws, building codes, and regulations must be adhered to. All the necessary, all other necessary permits must be obtained prior to the start of construction, and an as-built must be provided to the planning department.
Do you have a second?
Yeah.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Okay, unanimous.
Thank you for your time.
Good morning. You know, Diane, what's very confusing about this, they don't explicitly describe the procedure outside of the standard.
I guess that threw me off.
That's what I'm saying. I fully, because, good evening. The way, I found this very confusing, the way they did it. And it, the way that, you know, because the application is a special permit application, and yet, for, according to our zoning bylaws, all special permit applications must have a finding.
Right.
And that, and of course, they define what the finding is here, but they don't clearly state that it's the finding.
Right, and I guess that's what, like, kind of threw me off, and I should have realized that...
I was looking at it over and over, and I'm saying, but I mean, but the first gentleman, like, he said, it does. Janay, can you clarify that so we don't have this problem again? You know, because all says, all special permit applications must meet the finding and the special permit, two separate permits, two special votes. So, it seems to me, when I read that accessory dwelling bylaw, it seems to me that this is a little too complicated. It did say, this is the finding that must be made, and then the granting of a special permit.
Right, but I guess, I guess what, me, like, say, when I did my homework with this, I probably should have thought that, okay, he's talking about, these are the standards, but those are the findings.
Yeah, no, this is what I'm saying, it's the way the whole thing is written up, to my estimation.
But I think they're, they're two, and they're two of them the same, but it's just the wording for the accessory dwelling, and that's what I, like, took it just as...
That's what I'm saying, that's what, so, because I thought to myself, you know, this, no, it had nothing to do with you. It's the way the whole darn thing says, it's a special permit application, according to the general bylaws and mass, I mean, mass general bylaws, you know? So what I'm saying is, this has to be clarified a little more, I think, in the accessory dwelling thing, as well.
Well...
Or maybe under special permits, under 2005.
I think the only thing that needs to be clarified is that standing and finding are two of the same, they're the same thing.
That's, that's what I mean. Yeah, that's it, you know? If they said standards slash findings, then you would know, right? But I was looking it over, I'm saying, why don't they say that?
Yeah, that's how we should have, that's how...
Yeah, I mean, I think it's the way it was written, that's my own opinion, anyway. You agree?
Well, I think...
Yes, standards and findings are the same thing, so we'll know that.
That's, I mean, that's what I said, to make it more clarified, they should say standard slash findings.
We'll surely know now. And it's just, there's a lot more of them in the accessory dwelling one, too, so...
The accessory dwelling one.
A regular special.
I don't know, like I said, we, in New York, it was very simple, very, boom, 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 you knew it, and that's it. But...
All right, any old business?
No.
New business? I have a question. What day is the town meeting?
Under old business, I'm up there sometime in June. I think it's the end of June.
Your appointment is up?
My appointment is up.
Well, I hope you get reappointed.
I didn't know whether the board felt that way or not, so we'll see.
Town meeting is June 6.
June 6?
Yeah.
And the next meeting is May something?
May 18.
Yeah. All right.
Yeah, it won't be, I mean, I'll be in Disney.
Okay.
Letting them know.
That's a busy month for me.
Any other new business?
Are you sure you want to be here?
Yeah.
I'm kidding. I thought maybe we frightened you already.
Anyone like to make a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
We're all set.
We'll see you, Dave.
Bye, Dave, take care.